We'll call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Harrison County Board of Education, November first, two thousand and twenty-two. We'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance stood by the United States of America and its republic, for which it stands one nation in a government indivisible with delivery, justice for all.
No special recognitions, presentations, Delegations, and I do have something to say from the chair. And sometimes we ran into this before, and sometimes we have delegations, sometimes we don't. I'm glad when we have a hundred people speak, and at least they're involved. But I do need to let people know, because during COVID, we had this similar situation with a lot of people coming and speaking. Sometimes the public wants to speak, and they're trying to get an interaction from the board, and we can't do that. Anyone on this board, or the superintendent, and anyone up here that's available following this meeting, you can talk to them, whatever. But we can't interact during delegations. And we knew that before. And then further with that, I just want to bring something. This was a special circumstances report that came from the Department of Education. You know, the worst thing that a school board can do, I mean, we have to deal with, not only Ethics Commission, but the State Board of Education. And the worst thing you could do is become a takeover county. And Logan County fell into that last week, where the state took it over. And when you're looking at noncompliance, one that really stuck out that brings this to mind, and the reason I bring it up, is one of their noncompliance issues was during board member comments at the conclusion of September twenty-six, twenty-two, and twenty-two board meeting, a board member, Logan County, not here, directly addressed and questioned a citizen who presented as a delegation at the beginning of the meeting, even though the discussion was not related to items on the meeting agenda. So that's why I just want to let the public know. It's not that we're not listening and aren't happy to interact, we just can't during the meeting. We're here to talk to you after the meeting. And that's just, I just wanted to put that out there, that, you know, no one wants to speak to you more than anyone, than the folks up here. It's kind of hard, even during, especially during COVID, when there were several people saying not very nice things to us and calling his names. It's hard to sit here and take it harder for us. But I'm just trying to make sure that we're in compliance, and that that's what I wanted to say. But with that, we have several delegations today. First one is Molly Wilford, Clarksburg. Molly here? John Scott?
Thank you.
And I noticed there's two other, two other Scots.
There are two other Scots, my father and my wife. Unfortunately, my wife had to stay home with the kids, because our babysitter got tied up. And most of you know my dad and-
Is Ms. Dickens here?
I don't know if she made it yet or not. I don't see her.
Did your kids talk to the babysitter?
You know, you know, my brother, so if they take after him, probably so.
There you go.
Um, I want to discuss a couple of things. And they've all arisen out of an incident that occurred in, two incidents occurred in my daughter's school, and particularly my daughter's classroom. Before I do that, I would like to address some general concerns. Number one, and I've discussed this with the superintendent and other people at the board office, about use of the website. Angela and I spent five minutes today trying to find the delegation form, or close to it. And we've discussed the resources, things like that. That website is very difficult to manage, and very difficult to find things on. Number two about the website, my wife, I, other people have tried to see the meetings online. The link for this meeting actually takes you to a Teams viewer. And not a lot of people download the Teams or use the Teams. And finding the link was a little difficult. I think, as we discussed with the superintendent, this, this website needs redesign, so it's more user friendly. I've looked at other websites around the state and around the country. We definitely have a cumbersome website. That's number one. Now on to the more substantive things. This incident that occurred in my daughter's classroom, I've made you all aware of. I have emailed, called, and talked to all of the board members. I've talked to the county office. I will state unequivocally that Mrs. Dick and her staff have been spectacular through this. Just today, I had to carry my daughter to school. Niva, my daughter. Niva, the secretary, took care of my daughter, got her to the classroom, calmed her down. That's the second time she's had to do that. That leads me into where we're at today and what I want to discuss. I have, it's been over six weeks since the first incident. It's been over three weeks since the second incident. In that time, I have asked that Ms. Stutler, Ms. Mancini, go with me to the classroom, sit and watch these kids, observe what they've been through. I've asked if they've been to the classroom and observed these kids. Now, I was told by Ms. Stutler that she met with the prince, she went, met with the principal, the teacher, the counselors. But this level of violence, and I talked to the teacher, I had the teacher walk me through the incident that happened in front of my daughter and twenty-three other kids. This was a horrific event. What we as parents, and I represent a lot of the parents, are looking for is, how does this get treated? I ask, is there a trauma treatment team? I was told, well, we leave that up to the counselor. With this level of violence, with this trauma that was inflicted, there needs to be a trauma team with a plan on how to deal with this. It's, they're all over the country. It took me ten minutes to find four plans on the internet. That disappoints me that that plan's not there. But that's something that can be fixed, and we're asking that it be fixed. Because these kids, according to the teacher, and she didn't give me names, they break down and cry during class. My wife and I just talked to my daughter tonight. She's scared to be in that classroom. Mr. Reiser has been working with them. He's done a great job. Like I said, Ms. Dick and her staff, wonderful job. But their trauma is much greater than just getting a counselor in it. There has to be a plan. There has to be a team. You all have hired a mental health coordinator. Has she been in this room? Has she observed these kids? Has she talked to these kids? And I see you nodding your head, Ms. Stutler.
She's been with Mrs. Dick.
Okay, I understand, with Mrs. Dick. But has she seen the kids? That's the question, because the kids are the ones that have suffered. And, you know, my daughter has missed five days of school, four days I've had to carry her in there. That's ridiculous. That's ridiculous. I know other parents, same thing. Their kids wake up, they don't want to go to school, they don't feel safe. Grades are dropping. And again, getting back to the trauma team, this is an easy fix. Now, I was listening to some of the principals earlier, and, you know, this seems to be ad hoc. Well, this school does this, and that school does that. That's not helping our kids. That's not helping our kids. We need a plan. Now, I had a meeting, as I told you all at the last meeting, with various people here in the county office. I was told specifically that I would be kept informed of what was going on, so that I could relay it to the parents. You all know me. Everybody up here knows me. I'm the reasonable. My wife, these other parents, they're angry. They're hurt. They're worried. And I've tried that sort of as a mouthpiece for them. But the communication is not there. I have sent multiple emails. I've copied all of the board members on them with questions, specific questions that have not been answered. And to the point where, since I believe the last response I got to any email from Mrs. Stutler or Ms. Mancini was October twenty-first, and there have been emails since then. The questions I'm not asking don't pertain to individual students, don't pertain to confidential information. They're general questions on where we're at and what we're doing. One of the questions I have, and I think it's important to the board, is why weren't the parents notified? I just had a parent last week see a message, a sheet that I gave out, asking for them to call me if they had any questions about the incident. This parent didn't know, because she doesn't check the child's folder very often. Okay, now that's on her. But you can send us a text message when our kid is absent from school. So you can have the ability to individualize text messages. All of what, I picked my daughter up from school, the day of the incident. She gets in my truck, and she breaks down. Now, I got no reason, I have no, I don't know why. Why is my daughter inconsolable? And why is her sister in the backseat saying, we had a code yellow, we had a code yellow? I don't know. But we're now six weeks out, plus. And the parents still haven't been notified. If it wasn't for me, they, a lot of them wouldn't know. And if it wasn't from the other parents talking, they wouldn't know. And that is inconceivable to me, that you can tell me when my kid misses school, or when it's a snow day, but when they, when an act of violence that results in extreme trauma to children, you don't notify us. And I've heard, well, when I was a principal, I would have called, or this or that. That's, maybe you would have, and maybe that's great. But in today's world, with all of the technology, there should be a plan. Principal does this, school board does this, this person does this. And there's no written plan. I've asked for it. Or if there is a written plan, I've not been given it. There needs to be a plan on who does what. Because you can't put that on the principal or the teacher. I will be honest with you, Mrs. Rohaly needs counseling also. She is shook by this event, to the core. And, you know, one of the things, and I'm going to digress a little bit, I have the ability to get my daughter counseling. And I do. She's seeing two different counselors right now, her regular counselor and a trauma counselor, because of this. A lot of parents don't have the, the ability, the, the knowledge, or the finances. That's why this treatment team, this trauma team is so important, because you've got to get in there. Now, in the handout I gave you, one of the things is the Plan of Action for Victory Elementary School. It's dated October twenty-fourth. And it outlines what is going to be done for Mrs. Rohaly's classroom. I believe it's a general guide. I don't believe, the things that are being put there are great, but there's no details in this that we don't know. And again, this was ad hoc after the event, and it's actually almost thirty, or, yeah, over thirty days after the first incident, that this plan comes out. I asked the board members, and I know you can't answer me, if, did you see this on October twenty-fourth? And, you know, or is tonight the first time you see it? It's, we need that plan. We need that. It's important, not only for the kids, for their safety, for their peace of mind, but it's also important that we handle these things the right way. And it's, it is immensely disappointing to me that I have sent multiple emails that were not responded to by Ms. Stutler and Ms. Mancini. That bothers me, because you all are responsible for our children's health, safety, and welfare. I'm a concerned parent. And I know, a lot of concerned parents don't know what to do. I do. And that's why I'm asking these questions. That's why I'm trying to lead this group. I personally think that the board ought to put together a committee of concerned parents, administrators, principals, whoever, and get us together so that we can get these kids what they need. Now, I, I know from conversations that this little boy, that this incident occurred, is getting help. And that's great. And I'm very, very happy for him. I've been in the juvenile justice system for twenty-eight years. I know how it works. I know how all of this gets put together. I'm happy for him. But we're not addressing the trauma that the other kids faced. And I will say that, getting back to not being responded to, I, I don't know why I'm not being responded to. But I think that's something that the board needs to examine. I also think there was a conversation that was had between Ms. Mancini and my wife. What Ms. Mancini told my wife, and what I was told in a meeting, were two different things. And I planned on, one of the emails was trying to confirm what was said to who, which was not been responded to. I have problems. As I said at the last meeting, as I said in my first meeting with Mrs. Stutler, I'm here to work with you all. I really am. I want this fixed, because we have kids who are, who cannot, physically cannot go back to school because of this incident. And it's not just our school. It's just not our incident. I called all the board members. I've talked to all of you. Three of you said to me, which school? Because we have this happen a lot. We have this happen a lot. Acts of violence in school, and we don't have a plan to treat it? That, that is insanity, to me, to me. So, we know it's a problem. We know there are fixes out there. Why aren't they being done? It's been over four weeks since I had my meeting with the administration, the, the school board administration. And there were certain things that I was told I would be kept informed of. I've not heard, have they fixed the notification system? I don't know.
Mr. Scott, I'd like to stop, because it was five minutes, and I know you had a lot of people, but they're not here, and I kind of let it go on. If you will wait till after the meeting, the folks that you're talking about, superintendent, Ms. Mancini, are here. And please, if you wait till after the meeting, they are here, and you can talk to them about your specific, or any board member for that matter, specific problem. Again, because, like I said, I don't want to cut you off, but, you know, five minutes and-
I respect that.
It's going longer. But, but, like I've said, the, the problems you're addressing are with individuals who are in this room who can talk to you after the-
And I appreciate that. I appreciate the time. I would ask that the board members stay for a few minutes to, to finish this conversation. I will state, there was concern about the open meeting, violations of open meeting law. I have talked to the Ethics Commission. If it is a parent-initiated meeting, the board members can come. Email is fine.
But at the same time, Mr. Scott, we'll rely on the advice of our counsel.
And who is your counsel?
Well, and this would be Jason Law, correct? Or Suda Deniger from Steptus. So, it's two, we can't direct them as the board, because then I'd be on the hook for the, the bill that happened in the past one time. So that's up to Mrs. Stutler, whoever she chooses to send this to. We have lots of counsel, you know, for different things, so it'd be one of the two of those.
Okay. Well, I would ask Mrs. Stutler to please let me know which counsel she'll be referring this to, so that I can work with them in the Ethics Commission. I appreciate your all's time, and I would appreciate a little more after the meeting.
All right, that moves us down to superintendent's, oh, actually, no one else's, out of those names have arrived since then, I'm assuming. So, moves us down to superintendent's update. Ms. Stutler?
Thank you, Mr. Hamery. Mr. Durico did not have the opportunity to talk or to speak after his principles presented, so I'm going to give you the floor for a few minutes.
Thank you. I do have, I think we may actually make some notes, four quick notes from what was said, because I think you found this in each of the presentations in some shape, way, or form. And I'll start with student attendance. Obviously, we know how important it is for the student to be present, to receive that instruction, and to receive that daily practice of the standards and so forth. And that's a challenge to, that we continue to work on. And maybe the best solution, takes me to point two, and John Rogers really, really hit upon this, was it's time for us to return to some kind of normalcy. I have actually referred to it as time for us to play school again. I mean, we need those routines. I think those routines are important for students, for parents, for families, it's important for the staff. I'll even expand that to communities when it comes to extrapricular activities and community events that happen from the school's standpoint. We're all, we all appreciate those routines. And I think routines play a part with student attendance as well. So, it was also touched upon briefly about staffing. I don't think it's any secret that we are in a, we all, as a district and statewide, are looking for certified teachers, and quality teachers in all areas. And I think that is a problem that's still going to be developing for some time to come. And then finally, my, my last point is, and I've expressed this to my middle school principals, and will be soon to my high school principals, but I've always had the philosophy that between grade configurations, the middle school is sending the best students they have to the high school. The elementary schools are sending the best students they have to the middle school. So it's not a blame game. I think each school is doing what they can to prepare their students for the next level. But out of that point, I think it's good to have what I want to call vertical conversations. I think having the vertical alignment with standards and so forth, if there's opportunities for teachers to network between grade levels, even between high school, middle, middle to elementary, I think having just conversations will be enlightening to both sides and can help each other. So, so in summary, that's what I have.
The only thing I'd like to say is, usually at our principals' meetings, the first conversation that we have is the principal's field this year has been more normal, getting back to routine that we haven't had. And it comes up almost inadvertently at all of our principals' meetings, that they feel like we're getting back into some normalcy. And that's huge. And as far as attendance goes, it's the same thing. So we're trying to reinstate all the things that we did prior to COVID. It did turn us upside down. Not making excuses for that, but we're finally feeling like we're back in our routine. Kids are coming and going like they should be going. And it's, it's a conversation we have almost at every principal's meeting to begin, other than we, Miss Two Point O. That's usually the first point, though.
Just to add to that, that, you know, yes, COVID was a hiccup. I mean, we had to deal with COVID. And once again, I've heard a couple people say to me, not necessarily tonight, but it's no longer an excuse. We got to move forward and, and keep moving forward, and that's what we want to do.
And I think we've identified those deficits and how to look at that with some consistency. The other thing that we have, I wanted to let you know, we are, we did put out the culture surveys. I'll be doing those in November here. It's the second week. Students will be participating. We're sending those out for teachers, the students, and the staff to do the culture surveys. That was a process. So those will begin, I think it's November fourth and seventh. We had to get the schools registered, we had to get the links out. So those have all been done, and then communicated with the schools, and we'll share those results as soon as we can get those in and get them tabulated. So that, that's in process right now. Also, facilities, I think we have an update from Mr. Olympic, which has something going on.
There is. There's always a lot of facilities. So we do have a kind of a strategic planning meeting tomorrow with McKinley on how we're going to move forward with our HVAC projects. And, and I'll brief you all in the future, or the superintendent will. That's tomorrow morning at eight-thirty. And, and I know that we've been assured that we're, we're really ready to bid out the Simpson River project. And, and I've been told that, I've been assured that. And I say that sincerely, because I know it's important. And we've talked at the plant about that. As far as the property, I know that it's, it's very important to the board that, you know, that Harris County Schools doesn't own property that we're no longer utilizing. We do have a complete property inventory, and there are four pieces of property. And just kind of updating you on the, on the-
Just kind of updating you on the, on the progress, uh, working with Kaufman's Real Estate for the online auction. They are now inventorying all the furniture in the Lost Creek School and their annex and also in Rita. Um, that will be put on an online auction along with those two, uh, properties. So, that should be happening, I'm thinking within the week or two. Takes a long time for them to go in and actually inventory all that, uh, surplus furniture. So, um, then I did get, we were able to, working with, uh, Jim Harris to get a meets and bounds description on the piece of property over on Cherry Camp Road. It used to be a transportation, um, facility. So, we are now getting close to being able to also auction that off. Uh, and we have a future meeting on the Adamston Building with, uh, Central West Virginia Community Action, um, to review the facility. I know they're also looking at, uh, the cost for that facility to operate. It's the only group that has reached out to us and we weren't quite ready to do anything until we, because we still have a lot of furniture in there. We're trying to get that furniture in the possession, the good furniture in the possession of the elementary schools that can utilize it so that we're efficiently using our, um, the furnishings that we do have and don't have to over purchase. So, we probably will be looking within the month and a half to start now inventorying. I've asked, uh, if, that we can get the principals to start claiming some of that, those items. And we're pulling several key items to key a surplus for future programs that we may be, um, operating. So, so we will have that, but the surplus then will be, uh, inventoryed hopefully, you know, by the end of the year. Um, and then that will be, you get, will be brought for you all to decide how you want to move forward with, with that facility. Uh, but other than that, that's the only four pieces of property that I am aware of with a pretty extensive inventory of properties that we own that we need to purge out of our systems. So, um, that's all I have.
The other piece that I wanted to say is this calls pretty much under personnel. The other is kind of just data collection in general. This is a big month for our funding cycle for schools. It's the second month report. It is the certified list that we get our funding for, for staffing. So, it's been a busy month trying to get those prepared. We've had, of course, Weavis 2.0 has created issues. They actually extended the submission deadline to today. Well, it was yesterday. We had, had to have everything submitted. So, it is a month late. So, all the reports, the financial reports, everything that comes along with that will now be pushed a month back. So, when we're expecting to see what our overages are and, and all of that, we're going to not see that now probably till, I'm thinking December. And so, that's going to really, while we're looking at, at the personnel season, like to get an early start. But everything is being pushed back because of Weavis and the concerns with Weavis. But we did just certify our, uh, enrollment. It looks like we're about 9,975. It's really in line with where we were at last year certified. It's about the same. Our homeschoolers are a little over 1,000, which is, it's kind of been, been steady. I don't know that there's a lot of movement. I will say one good thing with the Weavis 2.0 that I've noticed when we did our certified collection, there's things in there that we didn't get to see before. And just as a piece of information, there was 983 kids that kept coming up unenrolled. I was like going over like this is a problem. Actually, it registers anytime somebody is unenrolled and re-enrolled. So, it doesn't mean they're not enrolled. So, that tells you just since school started, we've had 983 kids coming and going. Enrolling, unenrolling. That's a lot really. I mean, when you're looking at
Do you think?
10,000 kids.
Some, some of those were the ones that had to be in.
I think some of them came in for a hope scholarship. They are here. They've left. Uh, some of them. Anytime we have a child going to United, it's going to show us an enrollment drop and an unenrollment. We didn't see that before, but I was concerned at that big number of being unenrolled, but that's really what it was. We got clarification as to what that was, but it was just interesting to see that number.
983?
Yeah, 983 kids either enrolled or unenrolled. All the movement is going on and, you know, our middle school, WIA was talking about the train population. She had 50. So, think about that, probably more.
Yeah, 90 something, 70 something.
Yeah. So, it's just fascinating to see those numbers. And also I want to, uh, uh, help, I do have, I had a conversation with Jody Sperry, our health coordinator. We are monitoring, there's a rise in RSV cases really nationwide. West Virginia's, it's more than we've seen in the fall. Talked with her today. She has had a conversation with the health department. You know, what's the threshold? If you, there is no threshold with RSV because we've not seen numbers like that across the state. So, we are talking with them every day, uh, just to, to make sure that our numbers are in line with, and we are monitoring classrooms. And the way it works is if we have a classroom, usually a principal will notify us and say, hey, we've got a lot of cases here. Then we break it down, like you would any kind of data and look to see where they're at. And if there's a, you know, a congregate setting or an area that's more so than others. And we will make decisions based on that, but right now we're not there, but there is a rise in RSV. And a lot of times we don't always know. A parent may call and say the child's not there, but you don't always know the reason. We get, we document it if we know it's flu, flu A, so we can see if there's a pattern, but we are monitoring that.
Uh, new WDU children's hospitals already in capacity.
I, I would believe that. There's a lot of, there's some flu, head colds, a lot of things. Yeah. Saw, saw Barber County do that. So, right now, um, other superintendents, we're, there's a group of about 12 of us that kind of chat and we're, we weren't there yet, but apparently Mr. Woodster was, and I don't know individual situation. So, you never know. It was the same way with COVID. You don't know exactly what an individual situation is. And then WIA also, um, mentioned her, a person and a half, her crisis counselors. At WIA, they were able to secure those and fill those positions. So, they've got a person and a half. Bert has that person and a half. And then Victory Elementary has a full-time crisis counselor through Project Aware. That's that.
I need to ask her. She got away there. Um, they're already filled up.
They, they take, see, it's a tier three level. So, the way it works is we have our in-school counselors and they kind of deal with the whole group, individual counseling. And then normally, when you don't have a crisis counselor in your building, you would make an at-risk assessment and we would go out to an outside agency. But with a crisis counselor in your building, they're capable of taking care of those situations there. If their numbers spill up, they, they keep a small number because it's, you know, it's that tier three level of support. So, we're, we're seeking us brands to hire, uh, these type of counselors. There's not a lot of them out there. The Project Aware has been pretty aggressive and with the Project Aware monies, they can, they can attract them because salaries help us supplement what we're paying them. So, we're fortunate to have that. And we would love to be able to do that across the board, but funding can be an issue. We've got some good, another thing under safety is the, uh, possible additional pro officer. You'll see that on the agenda. We're looking at some other areas there as well to fill in some gaps. And then really for, um, United Detective Center, we're going to meet on Friday. So, we'll have an update next time. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Most down to consent items. Is there a motion to approve the consent items? Make a motion to approve. Please, uh, let me back up there just for a second. Someone want a second for discussion?
I'll second it. Okay. I had a question or two there and, and this, this may be because I just don't know this right now, but one, uh, let's see, down, maybe Mr. Spat will be able to answer that. North Pole Ice? Services for $1,040.
What was it?
North Pole Ice. It's like, uh, let's see if you're scrolling down. Wow. I know Mr. Spat says something about that.
We got our own ice.
Yeah, that's in here. That's what I'm trying to find out. And it's $1,040.
All of them telling you that?
North Pole Ice.
Um, I'll hand it down now, but I can find out.
Yeah, there it is. It's right below. Yeah.
Is that, I mean, is that possibly a bill for ice for a particular school? I mean, do we do that? Like buying ice for a football game?
For a concession.
I would say it's a concession from a particular school.
So, I know that.
It's not here. There's not even water.
It's not under our ones.
Okay. And on down.
I'm guilty.
Right down below it, um, we have a reserve account, $14,000.
What do you have?
What, what is it?
What is it?
Yeah, that's. Right down below that one. On the next, right below it's Showstopper Graphics. These are all page one. I tell you, go to page one. It's all page one.
Well, it's all page one because anytime we do a check register, it, it's one page.
Yeah, this is seven.
The reserve account.
Those reserve accounts for 14,000. Seven 13, is that what it is? Seven 13, okay. Right above Showstop.
Yeah, I see it. Um, I'm slightly out of, out of the rest of that.
Okay.
I know this. It may have been misty on vendor. There's likely in the vendor number, but maybe that, that I can check out.
And right down on the next page down, Supreme Court Appeals. Probation Officer, 18,937.
We pay a portion of the salary for probation officers stationed at RCB.
In WIA.
And that.
10 months.
No, that shouldn't be months.
Obviously, it wants to be quarterly.
Well, now that would be full now. Couldn't be quarterly then.
It would be $8,000.
80,000. Are we paying the full amount? There's money from Florida report.
Do we? State money.
Okay. So, we pay and then we're. So, that would, with fixed costs, all that.
That was a request last year, um, that Mr. Kirby brought in and there was some funding available for that. He works with the courts all the time and they recommended that we do that.
And they're stationed.
And it's been a, a good help to person B especially.
Do you want to pull those two that he's looking at off of this? Uh, the ICE, I'm sure that's.
No, no.
I just need those.
Okay, just, okay, get clarity. Well, of course, yeah, because other than the reserve account, yeah, find out that. But as far as like the others, their vendors, we, we buy, we got paid a little less. We just want the clarification. I'm with you. So, it's been moved and seconded. Any discuss, further discussion on the consent items?
Wait, are you, are you pulling the reserve? Did you say that?
No, I was, yeah, no, we'll, we'll go ahead. We'll just get the explanation. Because generally the problem is like saving a notebook. We've already, I want to end up there paying because we've used it. So, we'll get an explanation on it. Uh, all those, favor say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries new business memorandum of understanding between Harrison County Board of Education and the Sheriff of Harrison County for Prevention Resource Officers. And I think, uh, from, I, I was with the sheriff and, and Jason the other day when they were doing the MOU and, uh, we just hadn't had it updated, uh, MOU for.
Yeah, these are for our current officers.
Yeah, for current officers. It's just an MOU, uh, for what we already have. He was just updating, uh, these MOUs that we haven't had, that we used to, we've had in place. We just haven't had a current MOU. So, is there a motion?
Officers?
With the sheriff.
At those locations.
It's just updating current.
And I'll move that we accept the MOU for the sheriff's office for Prevention Resource Officers.
Second.
We moved the seconded into discussion. All those who favor say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries same memorandum of understanding. City of Bridgeport Police Department, Harrison County Board of Education for, oh, this is the, this is the new one for the, uh, Prevention Resource Officers for Bridgeport Middle.
I was over at the Bridgeport and we were demonstrating the weapons detectors there and the police chief came over to me and asked at that time, I was just, it was informal, if we would be interested in an additional officer on that campus between Johnson, Simpson, because Jamie is doing all four of those. And because of what traffic we hear a lot about and all the, um, movement over there, he requested and they are willing to pay. They want to do a five-year commitment. They are willing to pay three years fully if we pay two years. So, we thought that might be a good deal if we could get an additional officer to work with Jamie. So, they'll be working and training under Jamie and her, uh, dog over there. But, you know, it takes cooperation with your local police departments. We really appreciate that he offered to do that.
The only thing I ask, and that, it was, there were one, three, and then we take the other two. Are we going to extrapolate that it's over the five years? I don't, I'm not real comfortable with them paying for three and then us encumbering a future board for.
Well, actually.
Favor of it, but I'd rather that our two-year commitment and their three-year be met together and paid yearly.
That actually came up and they, they've asked us to pay the first year or two years. The first two years. That's right. It's in this contract. And then they would assume the next three years. That's what the MOU says. That way you're not encumbering.
Well, then that's, that's back to the same thing. That comes back to the same thing. Well, what if they have new leadership over there decide? They're not going to do it.
Well, they already. Well.
Close that. Best of us is.
We can ask that. Right. Every year.
Yeah, we split whatever the cost.
Every year. And do it, yes. That would be my, that would be my.
Yeah.
Even the summer one years.
We're encumbering the board and two, if we pay the first year, they have to change their leadership, decide they don't want to do it. Then obviously we're going to pay the full amount because it's kind of hard for us to pay.
Full amount.
Yes, I, I just, I'd rather it all be, throw it in, figure out what, what we're paying, what they're paying and do it that way. I'm okay with it. We want to pull and renegotiate that.
I don't think so. You, Mr. Snyder had whatever and met with them. I was not in the actual.
Well, let's, uh, I'll, I'll tell you what, let's.
Something else about date. They have an attorney. They asked to get an attorney to review everything. Uh, and then if there's any amendments or changes.
Just pull, I, I prefer to pull it and if they can get it before, uh, our next meeting, then we'll do it. It's not, I mean, it's, they're not going to put it in right now, but I just want those things.
Because they're reviewing it and we're talking about it. It doesn't sound like.
Exactly. If they're just now reviewing, we haven't got it. Yeah, we'll, we'll pull it and when it's ready.
Yeah, so that's all for.
Well, the one thing we can agree on, I think we need an additional officer.
So, is there any objection, is there any objection while you're pulling that?
Oh, I wish not to.
Yeah. No, no objection. So, we will, uh, we will pull that. Actually, you, since there's no objection, you, you pull.
I just pulled the MOU. Okay. I got you.
I tend to lose this item. See out-of-state professional leave requests, out-of-state travel study requests. You want to, someone might want to make a motion to get it. That's all right. Any, any motion to get it for a discussion purpose?
I'll make a motion.
Second, move to second to the discussion.
Um, I'm talking to the out-of-state travel study. Am I to presume that 44 students are going to travel to Denver, Colorado? Is that what that is? Is that what that means?
Should be four.
Yeah.
Steps 40.
No.
That'd be a whole plane.
A correction. Four. Must have had my.
That's the national.
That's a lot of money.
For everyone, that's the national. National Western Law Stop Judging Competition. And we have a large FFA at South Harrison and it's a great program.
So, it's four. It is four. I guess all right.
So, the, uh, uh, I guess the amended motion with the change, or we'll take the motion with the change.
I will.
Four.
The correction.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those who favor say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Policy updates. Uh, these were policies that were out on 30-day comment period, 11:01. Uh, eleven oh one, uh, school attendance, twenty-two oh two, travel regulations, thirty-one oh seven, professional leave incentive program, thirty-two twelve, employment of substitute teachers, forty-six oh, forty-four oh six, school wellness policy, fifty-one oh four, English learner policy, fifty-one oh one, promotion or retention. So I, I, I.
If we can, our, uh, motion that we take them all together, since they've already been out for thirty-day comment, if there's no objection for that.
Is there a second? Well, you want a second to get discussion?
Second.
Moved and seconded to take those all together. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Okay, now we need a motion for them. We just motioned to take them all together.
Yes, okay, yes.
Okay, now we need a motion.
I have a model, it'd be the whole ticket.
So now we.
Is, is it instead of one, three, two, individual group? Would it be a question about?
Yeah, in each of it, yes. So for, for purposes of discussion, is there a motion to accept the policies?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion.
How much response did you get? Two.
Any other?
They were down there, they're in the executive content portion.
I see, um, eleven oh one, there were four responses, and so. Twenty-three responses for all policies combined. And like, for example, for the policy eleven oh one, there were four responses that were given. There were, there was one response given for the policy twenty-two oh two for travel regulations. For policy thirty-one oh seven, there were three comments. Um, policy thirty-two twelve for employment of substitutes, there were two comments. Policy forty-one oh three, that's going to be on the next board, um, agenda. But that, just due to, the reason I wasn't on this is just the whole format needed and readjusted. And so that's what took some additional time. There was a total of ten comments on that. See, policy forty-four oh six, school wellness, there were two comments. And fifty-one oh four, English learner policy, there was one comment, and four fifty-five oh one that were new.
Is this the MCT to their website, another words? Just, does that, surely get anything to do with, well, insurance, how in response? Or comments, or was this right? I mean, I don't have to look on this website, I got, I haven't here, because I never looked on their receipt.
All of them, I can comment on it. So, so what I do for any policies that come out, our website has a function to where, when you go to the, when you go to arco v o e dot net, it will pop up a thing right in your face that explains that these policies are out for comment. You know, there's a link to the policy, so you can view it, and then another link to where you can comment on it.
I have one question, also school wellness policy.
Yes.
And I'm trying to think exactly where it is on there, but it's about the physical activity opportunities. And it's before and after schools, do we have any of those? Oh. Before and after school? In our school system?
And.
Or, or, or opportunities for it, or?
Yes.
For students or staff?
Students, because I'm there for students.
Yeah, Project Isaac has.
I know they do a little bit.
Are all those, um, interventions, I'm not calling the right names. They come through federal funds, they have additional things, they extend, they extend, they extend a day. And you, they have a component visible with them, all the new ones that we bring down.
So it's after, and we don't.
Called recreation.
After, before, or less, yes.
I think it's called recreation. In the extent.
It says something here about.
Part of the requirement.
Intermural programs and interscholastic sports programs. That's what it talks about.
That's what it talks about, yes.
So I, I've never heard those terms myself.
Well, I can speak to the middle school. The middle school do that intermural programs. Not necessarily anything for, but they, they do at lunchtime, try to provide different opportunities throughout the year for, I'll call it intermural.
So that's probably not terminology, it's for Harrison County. In other words, I don't think we call it that, do we?
I think that's the state verbiage.
There's one question I have, I'm just wondering about that.
Any other questions?
No, but here's one interesting. At the forty-four oh six point seven point four, teachers and other school personnel will not withhold physical activity, i.e. research, PE class as a punishment. I found that interesting.
Like recess at the elementary level, why not?
Yes.
Do a few minutes.
Yes, I was thinking whenever they were doing things at lunchtime there with some of the educational programs there. And you can't interrupt a lunch, either. They have to have ten minutes from the time, I mean, twenty minutes from the time they sit down. So I'm just, if anybody ever questioned.
I hope they're not having to do it every day, maybe one, one day out of five, then you're good. But, yeah, I know where it should come from. All right, anything, any further discussion on these? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Uh, before we get into further, we did get an answer on the reserve account. That's the, that's the, uh, Pitney Bowes, or, or that's the money we put in for postage.
Postage.
It goes in there. Oh, then the machine draws off of it, so you have to, you have to load it up. Certainly, so that's, that's what that is.
We didn't find out about the ICE yet.
No.
No, I'm still working on the ICE.
We've been working on it.
All right, that moves us down to, uh, personnel, personnel matters. We did have an agenda addendum which we're not going to address tonight. Mr. Hoes. Yeah, we're not going to address it tonight, and the only reason is we didn't, uh, we may have had an issue with, uh, proper notice, and just out of abundance of caution, uh, if everyone's okay, we're going to, uh, I'll set a special meeting for Friday so we can get a notice in the morning, uh, Friday at eleven o'clock, I think. Is that good with everyone? If you have to call in, it'll be just single agenda item, which would be that unless there's something, uh, else that needs to go on.
It'll just be personnel.
Should just be personnel, and it should just be what, unless something else needs to go there. If you have another hire between now and then, obviously, you can amend that. But, yeah, I wanted, we wanted to act on it, just to make sure that we crossed our teeth and dotted our eyes, uh, since it did, we didn't get the, uh, we got notification. I just don't know that it was, it was, uh, adequate and early enough. So, but we do want to do it as a special meeting because we have several subs that need hired, because we need subs. And also, there's, uh, other important, uh, things on there. So we won't address that. So anything on that, we'll address on Friday. Uh, with that, is there a motion on the regular personnel matters that are in front of you?
Uh, so, except personnel, presented with the exception of the administrative gentleman, Salker.
Yeah, we'll know with the entire agenda.
No, yeah, we're not even, we never, so we don't even have to put that in the motion because it wasn't noticed. So, so just the, uh, it's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries, board member comments, uh, Mr. Tucker?
Well, as I always say, thank you all for coming, and, uh, we should take a little bit more time to thank the, uh, the principals that came here because they're, they're middle school. They're out a great deal during the week, that a lot of activities in any, any of you. Thank you for all being here, with the folks, their live streaming, thank you for being there. But certainly like to have it filled up here.
I have nothing this evening.
As I said earlier, you know, we have continued to blame, constantly blame everything on COVID. Uh, I think we've kind of reached to the point that we've filled that bag to the top. And all these communities are starting to have their events back, you know, and they said, well, they've been out for two years because of COVID. Now they're starting to have all these different fairs and other events, and people are there without masks. And all, COVID is here, it's here with us, it's going to be here with us for, like, the measles and everything else. Uh, and eventually, there will be, you know, they want everybody to be inoculated and what have you. Uh, myself, I'm, you know, a situation where I need to take a shot for COVID. I just had one, the latest one here the other day. That makes me about six or seven of them. And every time my doctor says, we need to give you a COVID update shot, I just serve up an arm and get it taken care of. Uh, so I think, you know, we can't continue to blame everything on COVID. And I, I'm anxious to see what the grades, you know, the scores look like next year because everybody has come so far with their weaknesses and their strengths, and how they're going to improve. So I'm anxious to see what the scores look like next year. And hopefully, we won't come back and say, well, the scores are down because of COVID. And, uh, I just hope that it, that it's because, you know, everybody's put the work in, and we've got the kids to work and to get the grades, you know, up to where they need to be in regard to state level and all. So, uh, that's pretty much it. You know, I, I look at a lot of it, and I always had this saying, and I continue to say it. When you look at it with some of the kids, you know, they, they do the best that they can, and everybody gives their, the best that they got in their school. But I always said, sometimes if it's in the cats, it's in the kittens. And that's pretty, pretty much a some substance that I, I believe because, you know, the kids are, you know, a product of their environment. And some of them's environment is very tough, they have to grow up in, and the homes that they come out of. So their only refuge is schools and the teachers that support them and love them to death and do the best they can. They want every little Johnny and Susie to be the best that they can be. So my hats off to the, to the, you know, to the schools, to the principals, teachers, and all the staff that we have, and all the programs that we give to them. But, uh, let's face, you know, we're not going to make every child a rocket scientist. We're going to work to make every child become a rocket scientist or something, that they can be very successful in life. So, uh, hopefully, next year, we'll have better scores, you know, to present. Thank you.
Mr. Bond?
Yes, I'm good.
Only thing I have, uh, and it's, it kind of goes back to, uh, the out-of-state travel request. I've said this for ten years, and I'm, I'm happy that those kids, because we have a great FFA program. And I think that's great that they are going to Denver. It's going to be a once-in-a-lifetime trip for them.
For.
Forty-four, not forty-four. But it goes back to, we've got Veterans Day coming up, and for ten years, I've, I've parked on the fact that we don't send kids to Washington DC, we're very close to it. Instead, we want to send them to Kennywood or wherever. So someone in the schools can be a hero to me if they decide to take a class trip. You know, the next time, instead of going to Kennywood to drive to Washington DC. Uh, there are kids now that, that, you know, in their twenties and thirties that have never been there. That's a shame, because most of us have been there forty-five times by the time we, uh, went to college. So that's just my soapbox. I've been, I've been talking about that forever. There's a lot of history and a lot of government there, and, and I guess that's, uh, that's me channeling Gary Fuller.
I've read about where they, uh, actually, back in the day, Patrols actually.
Yeah, train, I went there, and, yeah. With Patrols.
With that, is there a motion to adjourn? Second, you could. I'll second. All those in favor say aye. Aye.